Everyone, we're going to call the meeting to order. The Ojai City Council Special Meeting, 6:00 P.M., Monday, June 8, 2015. If we could please find our seats. I want to make sure we start on time. Could I get roll call? Could I have roll call?
Councilmember Clapp.
President.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Mayor Lara.
Here.
And Mayor Pro Tem Blatz has recused himself, and so is Councilmember Wyerick.
Okay. And could I have Councilmember Clapp lead us on a pledge of allegiance?
Follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is continuing public hearing for May 26, 2015. And the subject is the Wild Tennis Academy Appeal of the Planning Commission Approval of Application for Modification to Approve Design Review Permit for Expansion Project DRP 11-05 RV02. I am going to start off the meeting saying that we did receive two letters requesting continuance of this item due to the lateness of staff report. We received a letter from the Clark's attorney, and we also received a letter from the Wild Academy attorney wanting continuance. So I guess that's going to be our first subject amongst us council members to see if we want to grant that request, or if anybody has any questions, or if not, then I'll entertain a motion. And I do want to state that after this, we will still take public comment regardless if we decide to continue it or not. Anybody have questions for staff, or any other clarifications from staff? Mr. Summers?
I was going to suggest the council might wish to take public comment first rather than later.
Okay.
But I leave that up to you. Further, I'd note that staff supports the request for a continuance under the basis that more time for all parties to review the fairly extensive amount of material makes sense. And further, it provides additional time for what we understand to be ongoing discussions between the applicant, Wild Tennis Academy, and their representatives, and the appellant, Mr. and Mrs. Clark, and their representatives. We understand there's discussions ongoing between them. A little more time for those discussions to hopefully come to some successful conclusion would make sense as well.
Okay. Great. So I will hold that item, and I'll take public comment. I do have one speaker's card. Don Teeding.
Don Teeding, North Signal Street. Honorable mayor, members of the council, regarding cultural resource protections for this project, I offer the following comments on behalf of attorney Craig Beam, who is unable to attend tonight's meeting. Representatives of the Chumash Tribe in Ojai made inquiries about compliance with prior conditions of approval and completion of mitigation requiring an archaeological monitor during the first phase of the Wild project. In response, they received a demand from the city's community development department that the tribal representatives, as a condition to receiving the information sought, execute a confidentiality agreement prepared by legal counsel for the city in a form we understand that city staff had their interim city attorney provide. Tribal representatives believe that the form of the agreement provided to them based upon analysis of their legal counsel is inconsistent with both the Public Records Act and their participation in the SEQA process, and is wholly inappropriate and unnecessary for the protection of Native American cultural resources. Tribal Representative Julie Tumamayet Stensley, whose role specifically seeks to protect tribal cultural resources, knows full well that certain information regarding cultural resources should not be released to the public to discourage potential damage to the resources by identifying their location. Limitations of information that may be publicly released are addressed in state law in the activities of the Native American Heritage Commission, a trustee agency of the state of California, of which tribal representative Tumamayet Stensley is a commissioner. The demand that she enter into a confidentiality agreement prepared by legal counsel to the city at the demand of city staff as a precondition to releasing any city public records regarding the prior satisfaction of the Wild project's SEQA conditions unreasonably limits the tribal representatives' rights under constitutional requirements and hinders the tribe's efforts to ensure that possible Native American cultural resources onsite at the project are identified and properly protected. Further, the agreement that the tribe was presented demands that the city has a right to enjoin the release of any data by the tribe provided by the city in a court of law and seeks attorney's fees from the tribe or tribal representatives designated by the Native American Heritage Commission. It is unreasonable on its face. The role of the tribal representative's designation by the Native American Heritage Commission includes the protection of information that could put these cultural resources at risk, specifically through limiting the otherwise "public record information" subject to release, including detailed information related to the location and content of the cultural resources. The city's demands reflected in its confidentiality agreement, however, go so far as to preclude the tribe's participation in the SEQA process per se and affect its First Amendment rights. No other public agency, to our knowledge, has made such a demand on Native American tribe or ban conditioning their right to the release or otherwise public records that directly relate to the satisfaction of SEQA conditions of approval designated to protect cultural resources and implement the city's general plan. If the information held by the city related to the satisfactions of Wild project's conditions of early Phase 1 SEQA conditions of approval are not released by the city significantly prior to the conclusion of the proposed delay in the city council's hearing on the matter, the tribal representatives may be forced by the actions of the city in failing to provide public records to insist on a further delay in the public hearing related to the project since they will have been denied the information they require to participate in the hearing process and the ability to determine if the city has satisfied the requirements of SEQA and prior conditions of approval. The tribe is not going to enter into a confidentiality agreement with the city which is inconsistent with Public Records Act and First Amendment rights and contrary to the practice of every other public agency it deals with. A statement by the city which is consistent with those of other agencies and with the Native American Heritage Commission's guidance regarding locational and content information is all that is required for release of the public information as it's related to the project. I would be pleased to answer any questions the city council may have, and welcome any inquiry into the demands made by the community development department of the city regarding the confidentiality agreement provided to Julie. Both Julie and Craig could not be here tonight, and they do send their apologies.
Thank you. Any questions?
Can I copy that?
Yes. I don't have extra copies.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Summers, do you feel comfortable addressing what was just said?
Our understanding in drafting the proposed agreement and in releasing it was not to condition the release of all material related to previous compliance with the conditions imposed on the first phase of the Wild project, but rather to prevent the release of the Phase 1 archaeological report that was done for the site, and prevent the release of it to the general public, but allow the release of it to the representatives of the Chumash Tribe. The Public Records Act request provides exemptions for information relating to cultural records, allowing the city to withhold them from disclosure to the general public. However, the Public Records Act also provides in a different section that release of information that is otherwise exempt to one person waives the exemptions as to the world. There is another section of the Public Resources Code and of the Public Records Act that contemplate releasing information under confidentiality agreements to certain individuals without waiving the privilege broadly as to the world. Our intention in drafting a confidentiality agreement was to provide for the Phase 1 archaeological report prepared for the Wild site to be released to the Chumash tribal representatives without then being available to the general public, protecting the information within, not to prevent disclosure of all information regarding the project's compliance with any previous conditions. I apologize if that was not understood by all sides.
Okay. So what I understand is you were in actuality trying to further protect the cultural resources by making sure that you followed a protocol that would protect the release of these documents to the general public. If you had not had the confidentiality agreement, and you released them, at that point, they're free for anyone to come in and get. So in reality, the city is attempting to secure the protection of these resources. Is that correct?
Yes. That was our goal in drafting the agreement.
So where's the misunderstanding, do you believe?
I think the misunderstanding lies in the perception that we were seeking the agreement as a condition to releasing any information about the Wild's previous compliance with the cultural resources protections.
Have you been able to speak with any of the representatives?
None of the representatives have communicated directly with me, so I have not had a chance to speak with them, although I'll seek the opportunity after the meeting to speak with Ms. Teeding.
In regards to the confidentiality agreement also, Ms. Teeding included in there that other confidentiality agreements don't go as far as the one you drafted. Do you agree with that, or have you gone to the state to see if they have similar confidentiality agreement documents?
I used our standard confidentiality agreement, which admittedly is fairly lawyerly, and I'm happy to revise it to be less requiring of attorney's fees and similar indemnification requirements. I had expected that the draft that I sent would be an initial draft, to be a discussion draft, and not to be, here's our contract, that's it. It rather was meant to start a conversation. I'm happy to look at revisions suggested by the tribal representatives, and part of that could be watering down the lawyerly language.
Okay. Great.
I just have a question. Matthew, this is the draft, right? Says on here confidentially agreement?
Yes.
Is there a stamp anywhere that we stamp on stuff when it says draft? I mean, if I received this, would I assume that this is an agreement that I have to sign, or would I perceive this to be something that I should look at and have a discussion with you and Mr. Clark with?
The email that accompanied this had the draft indication, although I didn't put it on the agreement itself, noted for the future. But the email that I sent this with to Ms. Tumamayet, which I understand may not have been received by her, as I've heard from later communications.
That's correct.
Okay. So that may have also been part of the misunderstanding, the misunderstanding in this case.
I guess the problem I have with it is how fast it happened and how poorly communicated it was, and all the animosity that it stirs up. When all the direction that we've been having regarding Native American Indian tribes in this community has been how to figure out how to bring them into the fold, how to make them feel like they're a part of the solutions and not the enemy, and it just seems like this creates that you are the enemy. And it just bothers me. It bothers me the way it was drafted. It bothers me the way it was presented, and it's not inclusive. It puts a wall up, and we got to figure out how to change that, how to change the perception, and then also how to change the reality.
Understood.
And I do urge you to reach out to him after this meeting so we could correct that issue. Thank you.
Understood.
Any other questions for staff? I have another speaker's card, Pat Tumamayet.
Patrick Tumamayet, City of Ojai resident. I've been reading the emails in regards to the processes of waiver and of our rights to, in order to get information that pertains to our ancestry and our culture and our heritage here in the city of Ojai, and that's, we can't do that. We can't waiver our rights. And as far as the general public's concerned, yeah, we are part of a general public, but we're an indigenous people here. We're entirely different kind of person in an entirely different kind of place that concerns us deeply, and to waive our rights is like, good lord. I mean, I feel like we're back in the 20s and 30s, you know, this whole thing about in 1800s. Wipe us out, clear us out, and rule the land. You can't take it with you when you go. It's not yours. It doesn't belong to you. It doesn't belong to any of us. But we're here to protect it, to preserve it, and the culture, and the history of the people, and that's all we have left. That's all we have left, and all we're asking for is rights to our ancestry, to preserve the culture and the heritage of our ancestors and the people, the indigenous people, you know? And that's all we're asking for. And it gripes me that we're going through this. It's a waste of time. It's a waste of time. It's a waste of effort, professionalism. You know, all it takes is a simple answer, and that's to be rightful, truthful, and honest with your hearts and the way you feel about treating other people as people and individuals. So I urge you to do that. Wouldn't you like to be respected and treated right? I'm sure you would, in all regards. We're not asking anything different from you, you know? And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Coyne?
Wait a minute, please. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Summers, is there anything in this confidentiality agreement that requires the tribal people to give up their rights?
As drafted, the agreement provides in Section 3 that information disclosed to the tribe under the agreement, which is on page 2, would not then be disclosed by the tribe to anyone other than their individuals. And, pardon me, Section 3 and Section 4. Section 3 provides that the tribal members would not disclose the information to anyone else except as provided in Section 4. Section 4 provides that the tribal representative to whom the information disclosed may disclose it to their attorneys or experts, which would include an archaeologist, a historian, another tribal representative. In other words, it doesn't, the goal with this section, and again, I'm open to amendment, the goal was to allow the tribe to give the information to those to whom they need to participate in the consultation process with the city, but to protect the city should the tribe disclose it broadly. If they wanted to give it to the world, an argument could be made against the city for having violated the Public Records Act's exemptions and the provisions of the Government Code which require the city to protect cultural resources information. By putting this section in, my intention was that the city wouldn't be liable for that disclosure. If the city council is not concerned about that liability, then that section could be modified.
Which section was that again, please?
Those two sections are 3 and 4, on page 2 or 4.
So the part of the protection of us if they disclose, that's in 4?
Yeah. Well, it's 3 and 4. 3 is do not disclose, 4 is exceptions. And then 5, which was noted by Ms. Teeding, is the injunction, the city would be able to get an injunction to prevent disclosure of information to anyone other than those listed in paragraph 4. We have no expectation of using this section, but it, again, in our standard form, is available for use as such. That could also be modified to be, not allow us to go get an injunction. Again, depending on the council's assessment of risks. It sounds like this would perhaps be a low-risk situation.
Oh, I see. 5 is where the essence of it is, I think.
Yeah. 5 is where if the city expects that the information is preparing to be disclosed, the city can seek an injunction to prohibit that, which would have to be done in the right setting, given that there are First Amendment protections for speaking. But at the same time, if you've agreed in confidentiality agreement not to provide information, you so agreed. I think that might be the section that's providing some heartburn.
So if the tribal representatives want to take the risk of disclosing all of their information to the world, we could write that in here, basically.
Yes. We could provide that, that they would bear the risk of that, and that they wouldn't. What I think ideally is we wouldn't want to have a disclosure by the tribal representatives to the world, then be the basis for a suit by the tribal representatives against the city alleging that the city, by releasing the information or allowing the information to be released, let it be in the world.
Well, indemnify us against that happening, and then we could strike that section.
Yeah. We could modify that as such.
Okay. I understand.
And that's why I think it's important to get together and talk about this with them.
Yeah.
And follow up. Yes, Mr. Clark?
I just have one follow-up, unless you have one, Mr.?
No. I'll go to Mr. Clark, and then I'll go.
Okay. Great.
Okay. I was just going to point out that there is a related issue that requires consultation, and that is, as part of the new resolution that the city attorney proposed, there's a clause that requires, that actually reinforces Condition 33 regarding cultural resources, which requires that a compliance plan be submitted. And we indicate in the recommendation here that we should consult with the tribal representatives on the wording of that and the process that's involved in that, too. So I think our overall goal is to establish communication and to work together, as the council's indicated in the past, to make sure that they get the information they need and the input that AB 52 requires that they be able to have.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Haney?
You know, next to the state mandating that we protect these sites and protect whatever elements are on these sites, who has the biggest concern about protecting these elements or these sites, in your opinion?
Certainly the tribe.
Yeah. I mean, so it's kind of like, it's like, we're, again, we're closing the door on them rather than saying, come on in and help us. And I guess that's the problem, again, that's the problem I have with this, is it's not inclusive, and we've got to figure out how to do that. And they have a vested right, period, in protecting these sites and not disclosing these to the world. I mean, of anyone in this room or in this community, they don't want these sites vandalized. They don't want these sites ruined. They don't want these sites pillaged.
Yeah. So I guess just going forward, again, it's the recurring message, we want to establish communication, and there was miscommunication done since the beginning. So we heard all sides, and I feel like we can move on from here. Anybody else have any questions regarding cultural resources, or I'm going to bring up Mr. Coyne? No? Mr. Coyne?
Hi. My name is Aleister Coyne, longtime resident of the Ojai Valley. I want to echo the comments made by Ms. Teeding and by Pat Tumamayet. I'm sorry Julie Tumamayet can't be here today. I'm not speaking for the tribe, but as you've known for the last eight months or so, I've been part of a small group of people that has been working with the city to try to move towards a reasonable position whereby the tribal representatives get to look at building projects that involve earth disturbing activities before the earth disturbing happens as is required by the city's general plan. And my understanding is that the tribe has been denied information many, many, many times by City Hall, and I want to, just as an aside, say that I'm very happy that the city council is moving towards the preparation of ordinance that would straighten all of this out and allow for proper cultural resource protection in the city. But setting that aside, I'm talking about what's been happening in the last eight months with tribal representatives and city staff, is that documents aren't provided to them on time, they aren't noticed that comments are due by a particular time, they're having to come and look through the development list at City Hall and figure out themselves what might be at risk. And then in terms of this confidentiality agreement, I find it incredibly insulting to the tribe because the information that the city has on archaeological sites in the city of Chumash nature is mostly what was provided by Julie Tumamayet on a map several decades ago, and that map is not updated. So here we have the bizarre situation where, you know, the city is saying we can't let you know stuff that's what they provided to the city originally. It's absurd, and it's insulting. You know, the tribe also has access to reports written by archaeological firms. They can request them themselves. And it seems like everybody around here trusts Pat and Julie Tumamayet as the Chumash representatives to know about their history, their culture in this valley, their village sites, and trust that they protect it and don't disclose it willy-nilly. Everyone seems to get that except city staff. That's all I have to say.
I don't have any more speaker's cards. Anybody else willing to, wanting to speak? If not, then I'm going to, or Susan, is the Clark's attorney?
I don't know if this is the right time. I'd like to address our request for a continuance.
Yeah. We could go on.
Do that now?
Yes. Do that now.
I have one thing to say. Could I have one second?
Well, let's just, if you don't mind, Susan?
What? Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor?
Just a quick thing. I brought this, hi. You know, first, I want to say thanks to everybody to call the special meeting and do this for us. It's really great that you did that, so I really appreciate that. I think, I believe I said at the last meeting that the first phase of this project did not have any grading done, and we built, we were remodeling on an already developed pad, and that we were building the floor two and a half feet above the ground, and that's all true. Then I think, I'm hoping you all got the letter from Scott Lowen, my contractor, which stated that he did contact Pat Tumamayet and asked him to come out and visit the site and determine if monitoring was required, and Pat visited the site and declined. And so we were following according to our understanding of the conditions. We did it. We followed through on it, and we fully intend to do that on the next phase when we're grading for the first time, fully intend to have the archaeological monitoring as well as the Chumash monitoring as well. So just want to make sure that that's clear, that we were in compliance, we did reach out to Pat, and that was it. Thank you so much. Yes?
Thank you. And I just want to know, it's not just grading any earth disturbing. We're supposed to have an archaeologist or a Chumash tribe there, and the conditions, and I don't want to get into it, I just want to make sure that there's some clarity there that doesn't have to just do about.
I do, too, because in the meetings I've been to that have concerned us, the impression I was given was that we didn't do that, and we didn't contact Pat, or we didn't reach out, and we did. And that's confirmed, and Pat confirmed that with Scott Lowen as well.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Susan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name again is Susan Basham. I'm an attorney in Santa Barbara, Price, Postell &amp; Parma, here with Joe and Linda Clark on their appeal. We did send you a request for a continuance on this matter, and we appreciate the effort that's been made to try to get everything put together in order to proceed tonight. I think perhaps we all were a little overly ambitious or optimistic in thinking that everything could come together by tonight. We acknowledge the effort being made now to work with the Native Americans and deal with the question of the draft versus the, you know, the final version of the document and so on, all of which seems to be a little up in the air, and the consultation that your city manager has called to your attention. We also appreciate that the city manager has recommended a continuance on those grounds and has suggested that that would benefit all parties. We certainly agree with that. We appreciate that Mr. Wild's team also has requested a continuance in part, or even in whole, because we are in the process now of trying to resolve the issues. We've entered into some discussions, we're looking at site drawings, line of sight perspectives, and so on, and I think with a little more time, we should be able to come to a conclusion that will make your work a lot easier. So with that in mind, I'd like to ask you again for a continuance of at least two weeks. It sounds like maybe the Native Americans issue is a longer lead item, and we certainly will go along with ever, whichever is the long lead item should certainly drive your setting of a future meeting. But for our purposes, a two-week continuance would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments before, or any questions? No?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes. Councilmember Haney? So I'm going to close the public hearing, and then I'll go back to...
And maybe, and maybe...
Your mic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And maybe Kathleen, do you want to come up? Maybe you can help answer some of the questions I have, if you can, or Mr. Summers? I just, you know, regarding the, oh, either way, Kathleen, I guess. I guess the question that comes up to mind is, at the very beginning of the Phase 1 process of this, were the Wilds required to do a SEQA or a, I guess in the design review process, were they required to do a SEQA study or an environmental impact study on the site?
The original project, yes.
Okay. And we have copies of that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's actually in the packet. It should be in your packet that was provided to you.
And so... And so we were provided an archaeological report on the site prior to construction commencing?
Okay. Are you saying "we" meaning the city?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
But we don't include that in the packet because it's confidential, you know, to the general public?
Okay, so it's not in our packet?
The initial study is, but not the actual Phase One.
The Phase One is an exhibit, or is a separate document from the initial study.
And where's that at?
The Phase One is what is called, that's just a shortened phrase for a Phase One archaeological study. That's what's protected and not subject to the Public Records Act. And that's what we put it, or it should be in the, in the city's files, the archive files, as confidential. So not anybody can walk in and find out where ARC sites are. That's the whole issue you had just a minute ago. You heard everybody talk about.
But we are privileged to it?
No, it's not in your packet, because once it is given to you, it's public information. It's part of what gets put on the website. So it's just referenced for you.
There are ways to make it available to the council, but not to the public. That has not yet been done. That can be done if required.
I guess that's what I'm asking. Okay. All right, so there was one done, and it was followed. So I guess where I get lost is when Mr. Wild states that he invited...
Okay, so I want to just, and it was followed? No, it wasn't. That's the issue that you're talking about. You're talking about the, to my, my understanding is that the condition for them to have, so the condition state, the condition is, as you said, Mayor, archaeologist and a monitor. Pat Toomwite is a Native American monitor. So you couldn't waive the... I'm sorry?
Condition number 33 doesn't require an archaeologist and a Chumash monitor. The condition as imposed on the previous project. It requires an archaeologist, not a Chumash monitor.
Right, that's what I thought.
And my understanding is that Mr. Toomwite was the monitor engaged by the Wilds. Mr. Toomwite is not an archaeologist. Thus, the condition may well not have been complied with, based on the information in the Lowen letter, which I, may not be all information on the site. My understanding, though, is that it appears that the Wilds did not have an archaeologist on, looking at the work for Phase One. Hence, our suggestion of a condition to...
That we condition that in Phase Two and Phase Three. Hence, that's your...
Hence, my suggestion, understanding this history and understanding the importance of the issue, and going back to our earlier conversation about trying to move things forward and work with the tribe, that's why we've proposed a condition, and that's why Mr. Clark has suggested that we work with the tribe to structure that condition.
Well, I guess where I'm going with this is, if someone didn't provide that information in the Phase One development of this project, how does that impact their vested rights stature?
If a person has not complied with the conditions of approval of a project, if it's sufficient, sufficiently severe of a non-compliance, then the city might be able to revoke their permits. This condition, in my opinion, is not sufficient to get us there. It's a condition about process. It's a condition about ensuring monitoring of a project. The Chumash monitor himself has indicated that the site was not of concern. That's, as we know...
No, I'm sorry. That is wrong.
Please.
I would never, never ask by Mr. Wild or Scott Lowen...
Mr. Toomwite, please, if...
And even if not, it still isn't of sufficient importance that I think a court would find that it was a significant violation of the conditions sufficient to override the otherwise vested rights. That would more, the more typical case when you see a project that violates this conditions revoked, or a approved set of permits that violates this conditions that is revoked, is something where you build beyond your limits, you build outside a setback, something where you do a use that's not permitted in a zone, something of that substantial nature. Particularly whereas here, we have an opportunity to correct the record going, or not correct the record, but to solve the problem going forward and impose a strict regimen of compliance with this condition. And in fact, as I expect, the outcome of the consultation would be a requirement to have both the Chumash monitor and an archaeologist on site. That would exceed the existing requirement. That would exceed the current condition number 33. And I think that's where we would go, out of that consultation process. And I think that would provide adequate protection for the cultural resources concerns on site or in the area.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Am I done? Can I go sit back down, or you have more questions for me?
Anybody else have questions, Ms. Wall?
I'm sorry.
Anybody else have questions for Ms. Wall?
I will just add to that. What Matt said is that, based on the inquiries that we got and the information that was, I guess it's like almost two weeks ago when we first were here, and the statement that they didn't require a monitor because there was no ground disturbing activities. I did personally, with the building official, look at the soils report, which talked about over excavation and recompaction, and looked at the foundation, and there was ground disturbing with the excavation over and the recompaction, as well as a footing placed in it. So they, there was a requirement that they, I mean, there was a trigger for them to have an archaeologist out there. So on both accounts, I just couldn't find a report. And so when Don Tanning and Alistair Coyne and everyone has asked for one, I didn't have one that I could give to them. That's the only reason they didn't receive it. Okay?
I just want to bring point to order again. We're here talking about an appeal on certain items. And I just want to make sure that it's on the table, is still a continuance. And anything that we have for staff to clarify, I want to make sure that we provide the opportunity for every council member to ask. So I'm going to, I'm going to see if there's any more questions in regard to this staff report that people would like to see or have, or want more clarification? No? I do want to, I have one. I just want to make sure that we have a clear report on what has happened in the past. Is there, or is there not, an ARC, was there an archaeologist on site? It says, "We're assuming." We don't know. If I'd ever received, I don't think I have Mr. Loom's letter, or if it's in this packet, I don't think I've seen it. But I just want to make sure that, I don't want to focus on too much of what happened in the past because I don't even think we could do anything in regards to taking away their vested rights if we, if we wanted to, just on that specific item. I think we should focus just on the appeal and correct the process. And we need some clarity, I think I need some clarity on that item from staff, whether we have something or we don't have anything. Because we're going back and forth with maybe assuming letters. We just don't have any verification of what exactly happened. But other than that, I'm fine with how staff has provided the rest of the documents. And again, do I hear any consensus from the council? Do I hear a motion for a continuance? Does that matter?
Are we going to get a response from...
Oh.
No, I just want some clarity.
I heard that as a request for the report, not a request for an answer now.
Yeah.
But I, I mean, am I hearing that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's the archaeological investigation by, I want to report, April 11, 2011?
Yeah.
By, is it George Torren and John F. Willmann? Is that the report that we're talking about?
I'm just analyzing...
But I think the mayor's question is a bit broader. I think the mayor's question is an accounting of exactly what was or was not done with Phase One in terms of the archaeological monitoring condition. That's what I understand is the request.
And this is 1-8, Section D, Phasing One Archaeological Monitoring. I just want some clarity on that section.
Okay.
Councilmember Clark?
Mr. Mayor? It's my understanding through the, Mr. Summers' very well-written explanation about... Boy, I've read so much stuff now, I don't even remember the stuff he sent out. Good Lord. My understanding is, there's one thing that this appeal is addressing. That's Phase Two of the project. Phase One's done. They're vested. It's over. So why do we want to burden staff with any more time and expense and delays addressing something that is not even on the table for discussion? Because legally, they're vested.
No, and, well, we have, I have some issues with some of the logic on vesting, but that's another point. We're not hearing the appeal. Part of the appeal is, part of one of the appellate's arguments is that archaeological mitigation did not, there wasn't enough archaeological or cultural mitigation done.
In Phase One?
In Phase One. And analyzing this, this second version of this design review.
Have you read Mr. Summers' legal opinion on this, on Phase One?
No, that's not my question. My question is, because one of the appellate's raised that we, that staff didn't review, that didn't, I think it was Mr. Wierig's appeal, had to do with the archaeological cultural resource. And in order for me to see if staff really mitigated it, I need to know if there was, if that Condition 33 is really broad in this, if it's not specific enough when this Design Two has come before staff. Let me see if I...
Are you saying that you'd like to review it in order to make sure that going forward, that it's the phase that...
That the design...
The number, the 33 is tightened up so that all this gets addressed?
Yes.
So why don't we just direct staff to do that, which I believe they've already done? Haven't you?
We've put in a proposed condition that is intended to do just that.
Do you remember what page that's on?
But I think...
So why would we want to dig back in the bowels of the past?
Because I feel like if it was done, if it was done properly in the past, then why are we even looking at it? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I'm saying it's strengthened for the, for Phase Two. And to me, how does that relate to what happened in the past, if it's been strengthened? Am I making any sense?
No, no, no. You know, Betsy, I think you're, I hear what you're saying, and I can agree with that to a certain point. But I guess where I'm coming from is if this was all done, the word "shoddy" comes to mind, but if it was done inappropriately, and the environmental report was done poorly in the beginning, and the, and anything related to SEQA was done improperly. For instance, the fact that the Clark's residence wasn't even considered in any of the findings in the Phase One. It's things like that that concern me. And then that's why I asked, is if there's anything that we find in the past that was done irregularly, wrongfully, do we have a right as a council to stop this project and fix that, and then move this project forward? So that's the concern that I have. And then that takes us to where you are. We don't want to change the past. We want this develop, we want this project moving forward. We just want it moving forward properly, honestly, openly. And if there was anything done in the past that was done improperly, it needs to be fixed. It needs to be brought out into the open, talked about, and then we move it forward.
Okay, okay.
That's where I think we're at.
I really understand your point. But one of the things, and I really took a long time to read Mr. Summers' missive on this matter. And there's very clear case law that when an applicant goes forward in good faith and expends a significant sum of money towards a project, whether heirs have been made or not fade, and the developer of the project gets vested rights. So it's very clear in case law.
With the building...
Yes, and it's been three years. He's been diligent, going forward in good faith, doing what he believed was what he was supposed to do. Now, as far as making sure it's better in the future, I couldn't agree more. We do need to clean up the process so it's done properly. But if you are trying to find something in the past that was done wrong to hang your hat on and say, "We want to open this up again," Mr. Wild could face another six figures in studies. You know, if we open it up and say, "Well, you know, I think he needs a new Phase One. I think he needs a new traffic. I think he needs a new EIR." You know, and that's, I don't want to see that happen. And I don't see the value in that. I think the value in this situation right now is recognizing the mistakes that were made. And from this point forward, making sure that we tighten up the requirements, make sure that they're met, and that Mr. Wild can move forward with his project. And I also don't want to keep throwing things back on the staff to write yet another report because it's clear in case law that Mr. Wild's vested.
And I'm not saying anything about the vested part.
Well, that's one of the most important parts of this.
The rights, but that's not my clarity, that's not my point of clarity. That's not what I want to clarify.
Okay, what is it you want to clarify?
I wanted clarification on Section 1-8, on Section D, 1-8, Phase One Archaeological Monitoring. And I just wanted to make sure, I don't want to assume anything. I just want to say, was there, was there not? And if there's other, Mr. Loom's letter in there, I just want to make sure I get some clarity. I'm not saying that they did Phase One wrong. I'm not saying that, I want justification to tighten up Condition 33, if that's the case. I don't want to just assume and burden Mr. Wild with another condition that's going to... I just want to make sure that we are clear on what happened. And then with that, we also respect the tribe's demands and needs.
Rather than what happened, is what is important, that going forward, we do it right?
And I believe that going forward and doing it right, we do need some clarification for the past, so it doesn't happen again. I, that's all I...
Could you indicate what page your newly written...
The proposed additional condition that I've put forward for your consideration that's designed to address this issue...
Yes, and what page is that on?
Is Condition Number 41 on Page Two of Eight. Attachment A, Page Eight of Ten, depending on which page number you look at.
I'm sorry, what page?
Page Two of Eight for the numbers in the center of the page, or Page Eight of Ten for the numbers on the bottom, close to the binding? Yeah.
On the Cultural Resources Protection...
Cultural Resources Protection is Condition Number 41. There's two sets of page numbers on the bottom of your packet.
Oh, I'm right on the page.
My understanding, let me speak to this condition a smidge more here. My goal with this condition is to reflect that evidently there were some issues with the previous compliance with the monitoring condition in this case. We've heard conflicting facts as to what happened. And it may be the case that we aren't able to determine exactly what happened three years ago, or two years ago. Particularly when it's a "he said, he said" kind of a situation. We can't get, we may not be able to get exact determination of what happened. It appears evident that an archaeologist was not on site during earth disturbing activities, which violated the strict terms of that condition. Reflecting that reality, going forward, I've proposed requiring this condition, which builds in a requirement for a cultural resources compliance protection plan to be developed. And what I think that plan would look like is a signed contract between Wild and an archaeologist, and between Wild and a monitor.
And see, what you just said there states a clear thing that...
That was the clarity you're looking for.
It's a clarity that I'm looking for.
Okay.
Before, it's like, maybe, maybe not. I mean, it's just...
And part of it is that between the writing of this report and tonight, I learned more information.
So that's all I want. I want to make sure we're presented with the facts and not a maybe.
Understand.
That's all. The rest of it's, I don't have any issues. I think it's done, you did a great job in drafting this staff report. But I do have questions on the other merits. But the question right now, I think, is whether we're going to continue it or not. And that's up to the council to decide right now, whether we want to grant the Clark's attorney continuance and the Wild's attorney continuance.
Okay, I just want to make one final statement. So Betsy, you understand the clarity that I'm looking for. If there was something done in the past that was done poorly, that was done wrong or done fraudulently, it needs to be clarified now. And personally, this should have been done in the Planning Commission years ago. The same questions that we're asking today should have been brought up and discussed back then. You know, the minute that you combined three lots, you had a re-lot line, you had a lot line adjustment, you had an existing CUP, you had all of these elements happening, there shouldn't have been any room for error. And that's all I'm trying to say is, and I'm not here to punish anyone for it. I'm just saying, if something was done wrong, then let's write it, and we write it by making it clear to everyone it was done wrong. Then we move forward. That's all I'm trying to say here. So that's why I've asked the questions I've asked tonight. But a lot of these questions should have been asked years ago. And they should have been brought up from day one from the Planning Commission. They should have been clarified day one from previous planning directors. They should have been clarified day one from previous planning directors. We wouldn't be here today if this was, had been done right. We wouldn't be having this discussion if the clarity and these questions were provided to us or to previous city councils then. So I don't think we're wrong in asking these questions. In fact, I think we're doing, Mr. Wild, we're doing him a service, because we're bringing everything from the past forward so that he can move forward in a positive fashion. That's what I'm trying to do.
Okay.
I do have something to say. I don't think that, I object to the questions, I just don't, I don't want to, and I think we all acknowledge mistakes were made, but the mistakes that staff made were not Mr. Wild's mistakes. And I, and I, I don't want to, to drag him through additional expenses by, by-
Delaying the-
Delaying the project or causing additional expenses, because he's not the one that didn't, made the mistakes in the process. He went forward as applicant in the way he, he believed he was being diligent, and case law says he's vested. I know, I think it's okay to ask the questions, but that question was already answered here on, on Page Two-Dash-Eight about the 33. It's right here. And I'm glad that you, I could not find it. So it, I'm glad you, that we got that clear. This is taken care of, and this is an example of, from this point forward, going, you know, taking these mistakes and correcting them. I don't object to that. I just object to just belaboring this. I am not belaboring it.
Please, I'm going to, I'm going to propose, I'm going to pose, I think-
I think that you should be, you need to leave.
Councilmember Clapp.
I, I think that we just need to-
He needs to leave.
Go back to the, the issue, and I think that it, we don't necessarily have to kick people out. I don't think he needs to leave, but-
If I could clarify on the kicking people out of the room point, kicking someone out of the room requires a very high standard that amounts to actual disruption of a meeting that is not met by mere speaking. It requires actual physical disruption of a meeting. I don't think that standard is met, and I would caution the council members against that approach, although the public should also refrain from interrupting the discussion.
And, and I do want to bring point to order. I want to show Councilmember Clapp the respect she wants, she needs because she was speaking. So I want to provide you with that respect, and, but I just want to bring this back. I just want to make sure that you were provided enough time for you to-
Yeah. I just think we need to not get so hung up in this, in the past.
Well, okay, so I think we're understanding what each of our points of views are. There's still an issue on the table, whether we're going to continue it or not. I'm ready to make a motion if no one else is, make a motion. I'll, I'll motion to continue this item to date certain, and we could discuss about the date today. I know that Mr. Wild's attorney drafted specific dates. I want to make sure that it works out with the Clark states too, which was the 22nd, 23rd, or 24th of this month. I know that 23rd, we have a council meeting, and we do have a full agenda on that day, so I prefer not to do it that day. But on Monday and Wednesday, I think if it's, if you guys are available, we could table-
What day?
The 23rd or the 20th, or the 22nd or the 24th?
Are the Wilds available on the 22nd?
That's fine. Twenty seconds, it's o'clock?
Continue this to the 22nd. What day is that, Monday?
A Monday.
Yes.
At same time, six o'clock?
Yes.
Okay, the 22nd.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Clapp?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Lar?
Yes. So we will continue this item for June 22nd. Thank you. I'm going to adjourn the meeting, and then you could ask whoever is appropriate the question. Thank you.